We'll start the meeting. We don't have anything on the agenda for executive. Does anyone have a need to add an executive?
I don't.
All right.
Recording in progress.
We gotta add discussion about, we had a complaint from a citizen on something going on with filings.
Right, we're doing that in open meeting, right? So we're gonna amend the, as an amendment to the agenda.
Yep. And there was also, along with that, wasn't there an attorney that called in as well?
Yes.
So, I think we should have, I think we should have.
Citizen slash attorney complaint?
Yep.
Okay, and then we also have to add the tire quotes for the grader. Anybody have anything else to add to the agenda? All right, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Move to adopt as, yeah, move to adopt the agenda as amended.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything on the meeting minutes of July 19th? I didn't see anything. Okay. Town manager report.
I can't talk to anybody today. Depot Hill Covered Bridge is now open. Insurance adjuster for the league made a site visit on the 25th. Suggested we have a covered bridge specialist look at it. So we had a guy from Wright Construction come up on the 28th. He did notice some sheared bolts where the decking had warped and a steel band that secures the decking to the steel beams had come loose. But everything's sitting on those beams, so it's structurally sound. I think once the water gets down, we're gonna go and see what we can do to fix it. So, so there's no issues, we're able to open it. Staff continues to work on submitting financials to our new auditors, which is RHR, and has been the lead on getting everything to them in a timely fashion. Ann and Liz were able to pay and send out tax bills last week, and we're already seeing money come in, so that's good. We have hired a new recreation director. Liz Alvarado, she's from Brandon, will be starting as our new rec director on August 14th. Jen's been able to work half-days with her, she was here today, and the rest, Jen will be gone next week, but the week after she'll be back to help Liz get comfortable in the position. So Jen's really excited about it, they seem to get along well today, so, you know, looking forward to that. I'll try to get her to a meeting here when she's here too. Highway's been out mowing road sides and grading roads. Fortunately, our gravel roads did not have any major washouts from the recent storm activity. And just another thing I wanted to add on, they rented a crack sealing machine, so if you see like the black lines in the road, which I think there was another name for them at town meeting. But they did Depot Hill and, and West Creek, and Depot Hill next week is getting chip sealed too. So we did learn from the chip seal rep that even if we like do a shim and overlay, they recommend we do the crack sealing too, just to keep the water out, so get more life out of the road. It makes sense. I met with Lynette Clodon at the Department of Environmental Conservation to discuss funding and grant opportunities for our water and sewer replacement projects for Route 7, Segment 2 and 3. I talked to her Friday, there'll be more to come, Butch and I met about it, we're looking to see what, we're trying to get ahead of the game here with how we're gonna fund this project, so. It was sort of a, you know, an introduction, and we're gonna probably have Craig from Otter Creek Engineering to join us, so we can really figure out how we're gonna fund this and what there is for grant options. So, you know, there's a, there's a process, if we, if we need to bond, we have to go through a bond vote, and if it's USDA, there's usually some debt forgiveness on the end, which is good, so. More to come with that, we've got some time, but I'd like to see that we have it in place. Submitted all required documents to the state for the municipal energy resilience program, otherwise known as the MERP, for the energy audits on the town office building. This building was picked as one of them that we could do that on, so. And that's really all I have tonight.
Okay. So wait, we're, I thought we had already submitted all the paperwork.
So Ann had submitted it, we were talking about this, she submitted it to the RPC, and now because the state's doing it, we had to resubmit everything to them and do all the point of contact and get set up with the state, so.
All right. Is there like a timeline of when we would know?
No. After flood mitigation, probably.
Yeah, yeah.
So now that the bridge, once it dried out, went right back down? No. Did you have to push it back down, or what did you?
It was pushed back down.
Pushed back down, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, and that, you can see like, there's definitely a little lip on it right now, where there were some pins where it attached to like the, the buttons on the road sides, where it is up just a little bit, so. Maybe driven over for a little bit, it'll get back down, but, you know, we'll, we'll keep an eye on it, so.
Yeah.
Ann was working on a list of our assets, equipment, is how, how's that coming?
It's coming along, she's actually gonna ask for some advice from our new auditors to see with the fixed assets list, yeah.
Okay.
Just to make sure we're doing it right, so, because there's some stuff we don't have to put on it, and so we wanna make sure it's just exactly perfect.
Okay.
Yep.
Does anybody else have any questions for Dave? Any select board member remarks? None? Okay, any public comment? All right, so old business, rec and economic development, oh, sorry.
Did you have something to say for public comment?
I didn't realize anyone was on there.
Who is it?
Okay. All right, first item of old business was rec and economic development hiring update, but I guess we already got that.
We kind of covered that, didn't we? I don't think we were sure of it then, so we put it on the agenda.
Right, okay, so the request for the PUC letter, did everybody have a chance to read what Dave wrote up?
Have you guys seen it?
Just now.
Just now, we haven't.
Did you want, you want this one?
I'm a little disappointed in it, so we'll wait until we get further into this meeting.
Okay.
Anybody have any other, have any thoughts about that? Okay.
So it is re-outback acre solar, I thought we were writing a letter just directly about the grid issue.
Well, this is, this would be to the PUC, the only issue between, before the PUC is, currently is this.
Okay. But I think we discussed it was a worthy point to bring up the issue of the grid.
Correct.
Yeah.
But it would pertain to, to the next era projects.
Or pertain to any project.
Well, but I mean, I mean.
That's why I'm asking, why does it say the Outback Solar, not the?
Because that's what's sending us over the capacity. I mean, this is, these two big projects that are coming up, is what triggered the, yeah, like us being at less than 10%.
That brought us over the topic, I didn't realize it was that one that brought us over.
It was the Walden Adams and Furnace, which is by the same company. But they're both really huge projects.
Well, should the Adams Road one be listed there too? I guess that was.
But if we're, so for alerting, I mean, it's not like the PUC is like, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, it's not like they're sitting around reading letters from the towns unless there's something before.
Before them.
Before them, which is this currently, so this would be what would get their attention.
Maybe I took the concern wrong, but I thought that this was, we were going to send a letter to DG Outback as like a complaint that, of the town's concern that the grid is being, you know, filled up with these projects.
No, I thought that too, because that's what, we have, we have party status specifically for this, I mean, that's what's triggering.
And one of the concerns, and I think I brought up this meeting, that we needed something sort of factual to grab onto.
Yeah.
And that's where it gets tricky with fact versus opinion, and so I.
Well, that's, that is a fact about the grid, there's no question, I'm just asking why that was the particular on the headline, that's all.
Yep.
Rest of it, rest of it, I think it's fine.
Like you, I was under the impression it was the two.
Yeah, I thought there was two things, right.
So. Okay, so I guess I need to step back, so is the Adams Road one, is that all done, finalized?
No.
Or is that still going through the processes too?
That one's not even before the, any court process right now, it's.
Made it as far as this one?
No, I don't know what the hangup is, but.
All of a sudden that stopped.
There is one.
Yeah, I thought it did, no?
I don't think so.
As far as I know, this, that one, that one is ground to a halt currently, as far as I'm aware of.
Well, this one did for a while too.
Yeah.
This one came up, and then it went away, and then all of a sudden it was here.
I know. But I mean, as far as like us, the town having any kind of like, like we, there's no process right now with the Adams Road that we're a party to at all, correct?
We're a party to that, aren't we? I don't believe so.
I thought we had a position, I thought we had a party status.
I mean, like.
I'm pretty sure we did.
I'm not, I guess I worded that wrong, I'm saying that we don't, there's not anything active right now, like in the court, that we would, yes, we're a party to it, but like there's no, there's no process, like there's nothing going on with that one right now.
I think that's still open, though.
It's still open, it didn't go away, it's just that.
Then we still have party status, would I be wrong, Dave? You might know more than that, mightn't you?
I would think we would, and I would think we want both of them listed here. So that when that one comes up, we would have a say in that one too.
And that's, I mean, if that's, I mean, I have no issue with that.
I'd like to put, I'd rather do that than just picking on one.
Zero wins, both of them put us, you know, way over.
Excuse me, you keep talking about both of them are putting us way over. Even before these projects came up, it's less than 10% available. So it's not, it's not these projects that are putting us over, it's just, it was even before these projects came up that it was less than 10%.
Right, but we're not over yet, so that's, the point is, either one of these puts us.
Puts us way over.
We're way over.
I wouldn't call it way over, I don't know that you'd be having brownouts.
Wasn't my understanding, Dave, and correct me if I'm wrong, was this included both of those?
That's what I, yeah.
It did put them over.
Oh, it does include?
Yeah, that was what, we understood, right?
The recent grid map that it shows here, when I talked to a person at Green Mountain Power, these two projects were already in this.
Oh, they're already figured?
So, yeah, it's these two projects that are getting us at now less than 10%.
Correct. So I thought we were trying to make this letter more specific, just to the Outback Acre Solar.
I guess there is some confusion amongst.
And that if we had to file a motion to intervene with the other one, we would just do another letter.
Well, that's what I assume too, because there's not, no action going on with the Adams Road one right now, so I think, but there is.
I don't receive anything on that one.
Yeah, I know, I haven't, in quite a while, I know, like pre-COVID, right? I don't, it's been a long time.
Thoughts are just repeat it if it comes back up.
Two years ago, three years. At least two.
All right.
I think the rest of the letter's done, fine.
Okay, so that's what I was gonna say.
My only concern was what we pointed out.
All right, I gotcha. I know there was, I don't know if you wanted, I know they've just seen the letter and were concerned that we didn't address aesthetics, so I don't know how anyone feels about, you know.
In the last four meetings that we've had, through the select board and the planning board, it seemed to us that it was unanimous that not only were, unanimous that not only the power grid, part of the, part of the problem was, but there was also the aesthetics problem of it being so close to the, to the village and what it's done to the agricultural and residential areas around. So I thought we, they were, you were all in agreement with the aesthetic issue, as well as what's, what has been determined in this letter.
Right.
And I don't see anything about the aesthetics in the letter.
What was that?
I can add a paragraph.
Is that something that you were not, now, you're, now that you're not in agreement with?
See, that's not, no, 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 this is, this has more teeth, I mean, aesthetics is really subjective, this is objective, so I think this, that's.
So I, I think subjective is a good thing to stay away from, and I would agree with the fact, personally, I don't care if anyone wants to put a solar on their land or not, I don't like the aesthetics of any of them, personally, but that is subjective. This is factual, and I think we probably, as we mentioned, we should stick with the facts. You could debate down the road on the other ones, agricultural soils, absolutely, I believe, are an issue, but the state seems to not really care about ag soils anymore. They've pretty much discounted that, which is unfortunate. So, a couple points there, I like, I think staying with something that is factual.
Had a lot of hay off that field, I noticed.
I know, a lot.
Yeah, they did.
A lot. Go ahead.
I thought the other factual point was that the fact that the town wasn't going to be getting any economic benefit of that, we explained about the, the school issues, the taxes and stuff like that, and so that's a factual issue, and that is not in the letter.
Yeah, we don't get anything from any solar projects, really.
I mean, I guess.
You don't, there's nothing to the school, but there is taxes paid.
If there was a house there, we would be getting both.
Not to the town, the state.
Well, but if there was a house there, there could be 10 kids in school, and we'd be losing more, so.
Three houses would create more income off that than that solar would probably.
If each had 10 kids?
In 20 years, I'll bet you.
So, yeah, and we could mention that, it's not that the state doesn't already know that, though.
Yeah.
They set this, they set this system up to work that way, so I mean, if we mention it in the letter, it's redundant, I mean, they, they already know. I don't think they care so much.
Well, if it's not a concern for the town that they're gonna be not getting any money for it, I think that is an issue that should be addressed in the letter. It's an opportunity for the town to speak its position that perhaps there should be more economic benefit to the town, and if you're just gonna let that go, then.
That's, that's not us, that's not us wanting to go.
That's law, right now, that's the way it is.
Well, that's, I know, I mean.
I mean, that's, that's, that's how they've set this up, and that was done a couple administrations ago.
Yeah.
And put in place. And honestly, I think we talked the other day, we gotta, it has to be a major change in the state policy, there's nothing we can do about that, we're stuck with what we're making.
You can still make your position known, instead of just letting it go like, oh, it's okay, that's what it seems like to me, that you're not concerned about the economics
This letter is an opportunity to, to address a lot of issues.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's your opportunity to say, hey, something should be done about, about that particular piece of it, and if you're gonna relinquish that, then that's an interesting position for the town to have.
I think our, I think our concern over economics with this letter is that we can't see an expansion with housing or commercial, because if the grid is taxed, how can we even have a develop, we have two areas, north and south of us, that, you know, are prime for development, that we wouldn't be able to do because the grid's full. So to me, that, that's a huge economic thing right there, that, and it's like Mark says, we have factual information, even from outside of all of us here, from Green Mountain Power that says, this is where your grid's at, you know, this is, it's in the red. Like, that's an easy factual thing to throw at the PUC and say, look, this is, this is not feelings, this is not opinion, this is factual based, and.
I understand. I'm not arguing about the point of the transmission and the substation piece of it, which I just think that if, if you think that the project could be better utilized somewhere else, then that's something that you should say, and not just relinquish your voice. That's what it seems like to me, is just, okay, whatever they're gonna do. And I, I think that if it was a zoning matter, for me, and that's kind of what I look at, you know, people should be able to do what they want to their properties within boundaries of whatever is set up now, and for us, if I wanted to put a development in right on our farm there, I'd have to go through the board to the town, and then you would make that conclusion, is whether or not it's feasible for the town. And right now, yes, the way it's set up is the state can, or the, any, anybody can do whatever they want. Now, I'm all for people putting their own, if they're just gonna use it for their own property and personal use, that's fine, they should be able to do that. They still have to go through a process, through the state government, through the PUC even, just to put them on the solar panels, so, and in this case, the, this developer, this is a huge, huge project, it's not even like the ones in Rockland where you don't even see it, because it's down lower, you know, and the fence is eight feet, and maybe they're eight feet high. This is 18 feet high we're talking about. I mean, I just, I mean, would you let me do that? You're probably, you're putting in the industry on your rural agricultural land, you wouldn't let me do it.
Actually, if I may, unfortunately, today with the way things are going, if they have their way, we will no longer be the green state, we will be the black state, or the Green Mountain State will be the Black Mountain State, because there's gonna be more solar than there will be greenage. I mean, I just came from Catskill, New York, where I used to live, and there is a huge, I mean, hundreds of acres on Route 32 in Greenville, New York, that used to be a farm, and it's now nothing but solar. And there's no way you can miss it from the road, because there was big, they got a substation built right in the middle of the thing, or a transmission station, whatever it is, you know, but I mean, it's the way of the future, it's what they want, you know, and it's not just with this, I was just talking with a friend of mine who owns a dispensary, and she was telling me about all the hoo-ha that she has to go through now to be compliant with the state and do what the state wants. It's gonna cost her thousands of dollars and a new system, and this, that, and the other thing, but unfortunately, there aren't enough dispensary owners to turn around and tell the state, hey, wait a minute, this isn't feasible for us, why can't we do it this way instead? It's like the state is basically telling, this is a system that you have to buy.
Excuse me, sorry.
And this is the way it has to be done.
I appreciate that, it's a little off-topic, so we're just gonna, sorry, we're gonna.
Well, I'm talking about state regulation.
No, I know, but we're gonna stick with the PUC letter. Does anybody else want to add anything to the letter?
What I was, what I was asking, to readdress this letter by including as much as they possibly can, as was been discussed and agreed upon in the last few meetings, which would include the loss of school tax profit, the loss, I mean, income.
Yep.
The loss of the aesthetics and so on, if that's possible.
But, so we can get this letter out, does anyone want to add anything? I mean, I have no objection to have made mention of it.
What's that?
I'm sorry, I said I don't have any objection to like making mention of some of these, you know, but I think this is our.
Concern, but, this is what we say, that's fact.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just concerned if we start, I mean, you know, I think everybody will agree that they should be paying school taxes on this thing. I mean, my property, my property that doesn't have any buildings on it, I have to pay higher tax rate than I do on my building, which is ludicrous, but that's, it's the way it is. I'm just worried if we get too far out in the weeds on this, they're gonna say, oh, well, and just chuck it. I mean, we've got facts here, you know, it's a legitimate concern, it certainly should keep us at the table.
Right.
As far as the discussion goes. I'm worried if we put four or five of these other things in there, because like Mark said, they don't care about ag land, I don't care what they say, I know for a fact, state doesn't care about it. So that's a moot point, because the way they look at it, it's better off with solar panels on it than it is with somebody farming it, and I've been told that, by them.
But putting this on, on, in, by putting these points into the letter though, you address things that might, you make a position, and you, those things are in there and have been discussed, have been discussed, and whether they care about it or not, it's in there, and when the PUC looks at this, they'll say, yes, they, they addressed this, but, and they thought, and this is, these are their thoughts.
But what I'm, okay, so.
When I, when I was teaching, the kids used to call it the bullseye method, when you're answering a question, you write down everything you possibly think about that topic, and maybe you just hit the right answer for the answer that exactly of the question.
One pellet goes in the center. No, I, I get that, but I'm just worried this isn't the place for that discussion, that's a different discussion, these other issues, the school tax issue, the ag issue, these other things, I'm just worried that this letter is not the place to have that discussion, and they're gonna just, that, you know, these people are complainers or whatever. I mean, we've got a major legitimate point here to bring to them, very, very, that one pellet dead center, you know, versus your shotgun approach where you're hitting all over the place. I, you know, I just hate to go out in, and I hate to say into the weeds, but go out too much further, you know, this they can look at, yeah, that's a concern, so maybe we need to think about this, versus 10 different things and have, and they, you know, because there's too much in there, they overlook the main concern, that's my concern.
This is a state-created issue.
Right.
It needs to be solved by our state reps, because they're the ones that put this law in place, and they need to have their finger pointed at them.
Yep.
I do think we have to stick with what we can to get their attention, because we have a limited thing with this PUC board.
Right.
And I think that, that has teeth.
So, I think, one thing you, you brought up a good point with, if you have to do something locally, that there's zoning and everything else, and I think when the folks that own this land right here, they mentioned it too, and I said, well, the PUC is like your, your, your zoning board of appeal, you know, that's where the landowners bring their complaints, and it's looked at, you know, in that type, that there's a board, and they make the decision, and I think the more that the folks that are directly affected by it as neighbors really need to, you know, do the letters exactly like you're saying, like what, what are your guys' biggest concerns? And I know like when we got the first letter back from the PUC, their suggestion was that the, I think there's four landowners that filed to do this together.
Right.
So I, I think what, what the residents around there have to say, they should file their letter too, and, you know, let, let the town stick to like this, this factual stuff that really, like Mark said, I think it has teeth.
Okay. Needless to say, I would disagree, because I believe that the PUC is, is, and this particular development is your only opportunity to talk about the issues that pertain to this specific development. Now, I know you have bigger issues to think about, and this is, and yours is a very good one, but once you, once you put the letter in, any other things that you want to talk about, like the money issue, there, it sounds like you don't care about them. So, I mean, I totally agree, you, you need to focus on that big issue, because you say also a concern is the lack of economic cash coming into the town and middle area, or in fact, you're losing money. So I think that you should make your big point, but then mention that those, some of the other pieces, and in fact, didn't, at the, at the planning commission meeting, didn't somebody ask for that particular dollars and cents figure from them?
Yeah, and they didn't answer.
And they didn't answer.
Yeah, I mean, that's, questions been asked numerous times, and they won't answer because they don't.
And that's something that, you know, could be in the letter, we've asked him about the impact of the development on the economics of the town, and we've asked him for this, and they haven't provided it. I mean, that could be a second.
That point, I, I won't, you know, that's a legitimate point too, the fact that they won't give us the information we're asking for, that's a legitimate point.
Maybe that can be put to other.
But again, I hate to go too far out, you know, but again, that's, that's, that's another cold hard fact, we asked for the economic, whatever, and they have not given it to us, that's, that's factual, as far as I know.
I think we all encourage anyone that has a concern or a comment to put that in writing, as I'm sure you already have.
Yes, sir.
That, that's important for you to do.
Well, we've already addressed a lot of those issues, we've addressed the transmission issue in our letters too, but I think coming from the town, it has more impact, and it's almost like, I don't know what the next topic will provide us with with regard to solar citing language.
Right.
But, I mean, that, that, that may ease some of my mind for somebody who's looking to come into Pittsburgh in the future, at least they won't have to go through what we've been going through.
Yep.
Well, I think you also have to remember that there's a lot of people in town that have solar, order them to, you know, and I do, I have three.
I think solar, I think solar is great, you know.
But it's private property to me, and I believe in private property rights, and that's the way it goes. I'd like to make a motion that we accept this letter as written.
Okay.
To be submitted to the PUC.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Further discussion, would we, I know the motion is as written, but do we want to add the tax ramification piece in there? What are we thinking?
What harm would it do?
It wouldn't, it's not another, it's another factual, you know.
Might be your only opportunity.
I mean, a small paragraph, I mean, maybe they look at it, maybe they won't.
It looks at it two items, which isn't outright, I mean, if you start getting three, four, or five items, then they all just.
Right, they're probably not even gonna read it, so, yeah.
Maybe a small paragraph, just mentioning.
Just a small, I don't have a problem with there being a small paragraph about
I don't either.
The fact that, you know, we have asked...
We've asked.
Economic ramifications are on the town, and they refuse to give us that information.
I'm withdrawing my motion then.
Okay. Would you like to...
I had a specific, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Would you like to restate it, or let someone else make the motion?
I'm out.
So, are you looking at this being based solely on, like, the loss of education tax?
I know, are we addressing that specifically, or the fact that NextEra was also just very cagey about giving us an answer? It's, we're both.
Do you think they're gonna care?
Probably aren't.
No, probably not.
It'll be on record that you, that you made a concern.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it needs to be specifically education tax, but that, you know, something along the lines that we asked the develop, the developer has been asked numerous times what the economic ramifications tax-wise are for the town, and they refused to give us a number.
Well, the town will be able to collect municipal tax on the panels, just out of...
For 60% of their value, and that doesn't change for 25 years.
Right. But there is no education tax piece there, so when they figure out the education tax, whatever it would be on that property is now distributed amongst everybody else.
Right.
So, we're all subsidizing.
Right.
Yeah.
So, all right.
So, adding in a piece about that, because that also affects, it ties in with, you know, kind of the economic development or growth piece or...
We got a thumbs up tomorrow, and I can send it to the PUC tomorrow?
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, you, you know what it is we want, so, so, all right, so I will make a motion that we accept this letter with the addition of the tax ramifications being added.
Okay. Do we have a second?
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
All right, solar siding language. Mark and I are gonna get together tomorrow and discuss that. We haven't had a chance to get together.
And that is my fault, because I've been away.
Well, and I've been really busy too, so it's not just your fault. All right, personnel policy review.
So, we, we're actually talking to a neighbor town about this too, that there was, actually someone we share an employee with.
Okay.
There was this, um...
Who do we share employee with?
Well, we have two, we have Jeff and Karen.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
That, uh...
One o'clock.
There wasn't, this wasn't very well explained for part-time employees and how the benefit breakdowns were and everything. So, Ann and I went through it, and I think she highlighted everything in red. There's not a lot. So, the vacation leave was the big one. Yeah, and how, you know, vacation time was accrued. It seemed like there was something else. Oh, we needed to have something in here about voting, which was, you know, we gotta let our employees vote.
So, the things in red are proposed?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Um, and some of this we noticed too with the union contract, a new union contract that we wanted to make sure it was here, like, some of the on-call, like, section 32.
It's mimicking what was changed?
Right, yep. And I think that might be it. Um, oh, we just, we tried to sort of explain the termination process a little bit better, so there wasn't any, any guessing on, they could get screwed with five days, seven, so we wanted to make sure that was really clear, that hopefully we never have to use it, but it's right on the, it's like the third to last page for the signature pages.
Yep.
And then, um...
Okay, right here.
And we added the appendix of benefits, so we wanted to break that down really well, so that everybody knew. Same thing with full-time versus part-time, and what the benefits were, because that was something we, I think, agreed that would change. You know, we could change that benefits page right at the end.
Yep.
Um, annually to reflect what changes were, so that's really it. It was more of just sort of clarifying the part-time versus full-time and what the benefits were. Oh, and we did the, um, for the clothing allowance, it was done in the union contract, just to get that in there.
Do you need a motion on this?
Yeah, and then we're gonna get it out to everyone, so. We should be good for your...
Uh, motion to accept the changes and amendments to the personnel policy as submitted.
Do we have a second?
Well, I'll second it as long as we can have discussion.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, uh, section 21, we got a typo. You might want to put regular full-time instead of regular fill-time employees.
Ah, we like fill better.
Oh, you don't like fill? Okay, well, I just, you know.
Good catch.
Where is that, Dave?
Uh, section 21, vacation leave, it's, we got a paragraph, and then that next sentence, it says regular fill-time.
Good to have an English teacher on the board.
I know.
I don't know that stuff.
I thought you were the math guy.
Or is it diesel, I'm sorry.
Super. What is super on my list? Okay, that's an easy correction.
Yeah, that was the only thing I saw.
Anything else? Any other discussion on that?
Look, I got my hand, she's Mike, reviewer.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Okay, fire department truck engine estimate.
So, Bill came to me with some issues with one of our trucks, and he, I said he'd come and talk about it, so I'm gonna let him give you all the specifics, because he's gonna relay it better than I will.
All right.
Okay, it's our 2004 rescue truck, which houses all our rescue equipment and safety equipment. Motor's gone in it. We tried to put an EGR valve or kit on it, cooling kit, but it had already, the engine had already been damaged. And talking to a few people, these 6.0s, which are in that, are noted for that. And, um, so I called the Central Moth Truck, Mike Nordmeyer, he does all our work for us. He gave me an estimate, and I called G Stone Motors, they never got back to me. First words out of the guy's mouth was, the truck's 20 years old, and I don't know if we're even gonna want to work on it, so. How about that service?
I know.
We have motor sales. Anyways, Mike...
Different division.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter what division.
They've done a few of these down at Central Moth. He's recommending they put a Jasper engine in there, which comes with a two-year warranty. It has everything on the motor, all the updates. The only thing it doesn't include is the flywheel, starter alternator, and wire harness and water pump, so.
Somebody will reuse the old ones?
Yes.
Oh.
And the estimate is $19,000. Our thought is that the truck isn't worth anything without doing it, and it's been a good truck. They just went through, he went through the truck while he was doing this estimate, and the rest of the truck is solid. We're recommending that, you know, we put a motor in it, and we could, we'll get probably at least another 10 years or so out of it, so.
Because that's got a little mileage to it, right?
Yeah, it's got 20,000 on it.
20,000, yes.
But your comment was on the hour meter.
They do take the hour meter and times it by 60, and the truck is, has equivalent to 98,000 on it.
Oh.
Because when it leaves the station, it's running.
Oh, right.
Barely broke in for a diesel, but it is a six-oh.
It's a 6-0.
So, it's running, when it, when it leaves the station, it runs, doesn't stop, it'll come back.
Yeah.
You know, I, I know probably ballpark figure for new chassis, you're probably looking at over 60 grand anyways.
Yeah, what we just paid.
So, what is it, an F-450?
Five-fifty.
Five-fifty, yeah, dude. You're up. Eighty, ninety thousand.
It's been a good truck, it really has. We think it's worth fixing, so.
No rust, no?
No.
Put some aluminum body on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, but frame, no, frame's all good.
Yeah, Bob Foley's works on it most of the time. He said the frame was good and all that.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Kind of warranties those Jaspers come with?
Uh, two, two-year, yeah.
So, is it a reman, or is it a new engine?
Well, it's a new engine.
New engine.
Yeah, yeah.
Guess we need a motion on that, that kind of money. I'd make a motion that we go ahead and have Central Moth Truck repair, put a new engine in it for $19,090.34.
Do we have a second?
Yes, you do.
Any further discussion?
Unfortunately, she turns by on a new truck, so.
Well, right.
And it doesn't work by the home without a motor.
Myco brought this lot, I don't know if he still got it or not.
You're gonna put a gas, want the gas motor in at this time?
No.
No, it's a diesel.
Same, same motor.
See, this, this engine hooks up to everything, that's the engine, all the wiring, and, yeah. Problem is, they gotta pull the cab to do it, I know.
I have the cab one.
Oh.
No joke.
I know.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on, on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
We'll get out of your hair, guys. Have a good night, thank you.
You too.
See you, guys.
I'll call Mike tomorrow. All right, thank you. Have a good night.
They're all on the truck, I'm sure.
Don't know.
They were just, uh...
Mike's usually pretty good at that stuff.
That's crazy.
Yes.
That is crazy.
Imagine that's not too bad slipping out.
It kind of ticks me off about Stone at least getting back to us.
Once or twice, from what I've heard with the original...
I don't care what division it is, you know, Mike's, Mike's set up...
Lot of business.
Plus the fire department, about two vehicles from it, the last pickup and the truck came from G Stone. So, that'd say much for their service.
Too bad.
You'll have to ask the chat.
Whenever, if you...
What was that?
I had two questions. I didn't realize when you had asked about public comment.
Yep.
Because I had just walked in, I didn't know if that was, anybody have anything, or if that was specific to what you guys were talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
So, if I could just ask two questions at some point in time.
Uh, go ahead, before we go on to the next item.
How do I get one of those private road signs?
Um, I don't know the answer to that. Dave?
We can't find any information on it. We see people with them.
Yep.
You know, some who sell lean and whatnot.
You just buy them yourself?
You buy them yourself, yeah.
I think, right?
Really?
Yeah.
So, uh, we don't have to go through anybody or get any kind of permission to go?
I don't think we...
They have to be...
Look at our sign ordinance and see what it says.
No, there's a way to do it. I remember doing it, you, 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 30 years ago, but...
I think Keith makes them too.
Yeah, you have one, don't you?
Yeah, I've had one for, since 90s.
Right.
There was a, there was a, I think, we just called up and asked here, and I think it was handled.
Yeah.
In fact, I think the road foreman did it, to be honest with you.
Really?
Uh-huh.
The, the way it works, in my understanding, Joe will probably back me up, you are responsible, if it's a private road, you're responsible to pay for the first sign. In the event somebody steals it because of 911 and all this other crap now, then we're responsible after that to, to make...
Is that, is that new?
That's...
Like, in the last 30 years?
Yeah.
I didn't pay for...
We didn't have the date after you...
I, I...
Last 10 years, probably.
I think that's a question for Chad, I think.
Well, we just, I know we have an ordinance for this, because Chad and I looked this up for something not that long ago, so let me look at the ordinance.
There you go.
Yep.
I think that would be the best way to do it.
Okay, I'll find out maybe next meeting if I want to.
Or give me a call.
Call him.
Okay. I think your number's on the website.
It is.
I saw, website was updated.
Yep, yep.
But there's no calendar, and it didn't give when your next meeting was, it just gave the minutes of the last handful of meetings, however many, so I don't know if you guys knew that or not.
I honestly haven't even checked out the website.
You have to hit the select board thing on the...
I did, and all it gave me was downloads for all your previous meetings. It didn't say when the next meeting was. It did say that it's every...
First and...
Second, or first and third Wednesday, but like before, it said next meeting blah at 6:30.
The actual date, yeah.
It didn't have that. I, just something I happened to notice.
Yeah.
I also couldn't find a time there either.
Okay.
Okay, we need to check that, this, this letter.
All right, that's good to know.
That's fair.
And the other question that I had, what's the story with Pittsburgh first response? They, they don't, as far as I know, they don't transport, but they're an EMS agency and they have an ambulance. Why don't they transport?
They're not licensed to transport. You have to be licensed to transport.
Well, what would it take to get them licensed?
It's...
More staff.
More staff, and they, they can't even handle the calls they have now. Staff report is affecting everybody.
Hmm.
There are calls that go unanswered, and you wait for regional to get here, if you don't have people to answer it.
No, I know, because with the way things are going, you know, there's gonna be a lot more need. I heard the other day, Brandon got banged out for, I believe, an ATV accident in West Rutland.
Mm-hmm.
Nobody else was available.
Yep.
And a couple of years ago, where I used to live, 85-year-old woman suffered for an hour and a half and died because there was no ambulance available because of a triple OD at 11:15 at night, and that triple OD took every medic in the county. And no other county had anybody available. So, with the way things are going, it might be something, I mean, if it's a staffing issue, what's the possibility of just making it a regional satellite office? They have the staffing.
They don't have the staffing, that's the problem. Regional, we have, Fairhaven comes in, covers regional.
Brandon?
Brandon comes in, Wallingford, uh, I heard the other day, it was one way down south was up in Rutland. It's, people don't realize what's going on with staffing. It's a huge problem.
Even come to Brandon, so it's not like...
Middlebury has come to Rutland before, on a call.
Yeah.
I mean, that's getting pretty bad.
Yeah.
It is. And I mean, when you constantly hear about OD's going up, this going up, that going up.
Huge problem.
You know? At least fire can get help, but hey, from what I gather, just about all the DPW guys are on the fire department.
Look at Brandon, they're down to what? Less than 20 members?
So, at least we have EMTs.
Yeah.
I know when COVID had, a lot of people gave up on it because of all of the, everything, I mean, the, what you had to wear for protection and walking into those situations.
All the crap.
I know that Brandon suffered a lot with that one, I remember that, so.
Are they, are they ALS or only BLS?
BLS.
Wow, so they still have to wait on regional?
Well, if they need a medic, you know.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Unless they're lucky to have an outside medic working for Brandon.
I mean, now you'll hear fire departments being banged out to, up for codes now. You never used to hear that before.
Or Wallingford is famous for calling the fire department for drivers.
Yeah, they don't have a driver. They might have a personnel be in the back, but don't have a driver.
Yes.
So, most police departments are carrying more first aid type stuff now too, because usually they're the first responders, so, you know, it's just...
Been like that for the longest time, as far as I've known, at least in New York, every police officer has a trauma bag. Every firefighter is a certified first responder. They're running EMS just like, you know, anybody else.
Not enough people that want to do it anymore.
Nope.
It's a lot of time.
Oh, yeah.
Been there, done that. It's a lot of time.
Yeah, been there, done that too.
How much is it, Tom, to do that? It's gotta be a fair amount.
Oh, God, to be qualified and trained?
Yeah, I mean, for...
Well, it's getting close to $200 a hour now.
Yeah, because it's a minimum EMT now, there's no...
I, I said, 20 years ago, I predicted the state of Vermont was gonna train us out of business.
Oh, there's probably...
Just what they're doing. They're training us out of business.
So, maybe the, the cost of doing that is...
When I, when I joined the fire department 55 years ago, it was a 45-hour course, which was a basic course. You don't need 190 hours to do a basic thing. You do, you can take it in blocks.
Right.
That's exactly what I put, 45 hours.
Yeah, 45-hour course, and you, you knew the basics, enough to keep yourself out of trouble.
Too.
And if you need to be certified with SCBA, that's another course. You got certified as you, as you went, and you did it gradually.
Yeah.
Now, they want you to do the whole thing, boom, and young people say, heck, I don't, I don't, I got a family, I can't.
Right, right.
I don't have that much time?
No, it's crazy.
It's not even just young people.
So, I said they were gonna train us out of business, and that's just what's happening. Both EMS, fire departments, a lot.
We seem to have a lot of those.
We have a lot of state problems.
Yeah.
Also, at the same time though, do either have any kind of open house? Because I know, like, with the fire department, usually, once a year, there's a statewide...
There's a statewide in May, it was a house.
You know how many people showed up at ours? Zero.
But how many knew about it?
It was well-publicized.
I didn't see a lick of it. I knew nothing about it.
It was statewide, it was in the papers, it was on...
Well, I know the state drive, but often enough, like, local departments will have a banner or something outside. I never saw anything around.
Then it was on Facebook.
I'm not on Facebook.
It was in, it was, there was a poster.
Yeah, there was a poster.
Posters.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, let's, uh... Alright, yeah, let's, um.
This is a guy to get information from.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Um, local option tax.
So I know Butch had brought this up at the last meeting that there could be a possibility of it going to a vote for town. I think this could help us with what I was talking about earlier with looking for funding for our water and sewer.
Yep.
We're the only town in the area that really doesn't do it on Route seven right now. And does collect money from folks driving through town, spending money. It, it comes back into Pittsburgh, you know, it's, it's not, it's, it's money that the town can use.
Right.
This is a sample one from when I was part of this process before. Obviously, our attorney would have to draft something, but it would look similar to this. And, you know, making it simple enough where it just covers capital projects. So it would only go into like, you know, highway or equipment or sidewalks or water and sewer, but not payroll or.
Right.
Things like that where, you know, nobody likes another tax, but this is money that really I think could help the town with what we have going on in the next few years too. You know, just a little bit. And just keep, you know, do, treat it like ARPA, get it and spend it. And, and keep giving it back to the town where it's good for, match money for grants on stuff that we could do. So I, I just wanted to throw it out there and it kind of shows sort of the process. You know, the, the board would either have to approve it to go on ballot or five percent of the, you know, the registered voters, like anything else, could also petition to do the same thing. So. Just wanted to throw that in front of you guys again.
Downside, I think a lot of the money's going to come from local instead of people going through.
So it's, it's one percent.
What is it on specifically?
It's on.
Any tax related, right?
Well, it's rooms and meals.
Yeah.
Yeah, your retail, alcohol and tobacco. So.
We might get some through traffic from, right? So people stopping, you know, at Sunoco and Mobile.
You're paying for it when you go to Rutland, you're paying for it when you go to Brandon, you're paying for it in Middlebury. You know, it's, and they're using it, you know.
Yeah.
Who, who is going to run this or?
The state does.
The state does it.
So they send us a check.
So let, let's ask them, how much does the state keep?
That's the important question.
Well, no, they, they do keep a part because they're the ones that do all the accounting for it. It's like a third of the penny.
So thirty-three percent?
Yeah.
But that, when we sell you a tool before, we're going to have to charge you that tax, right?
Yep.
We've got to keep, keep that in a special account. So it's going to make a lot of extra work for anybody that's providing. This is, this is on products, not services.
Correct.
So anybody that's providing or making a product is going to be eligible to, to collect this and.
Well, you'd collect it at the sale and then the state sends it to the, back to the town.
Instead of collecting six percent, you're collecting seven.
And it'll apply to everything that the sales tax, it goes right hand, fifth, it's the same glove that fits the sales.
Yep, same, same glove.
And then they do, though, you know, they take the grocery receipts from all the businesses that you, when they, and that's how they figure it out.
Taxes to your, to your state tax, yeah, that's where they see it.
And then it's quarterly, send a check to the town quarterly.
But they want it monthly.
I don't know how they'd want it. It's however they, you guys.
Yeah, they do.
That doesn't change anything. There's no extra reporting on it. It just comes out of what you do now.
Some people are exempt from paying sales tax. Would that be the same on this?
They're still exempt, yeah.
It'd be still exempt.
Still be exempt.
Same exemption would apply to this.
Yep.
So it's still collecting six, you're collecting seven?
Right.
Yep.
How much of a hassle it's going to make for people to process this?
I don't know. I mean, when, when I was part of it before, there was some concern by one or two folks. And after that, it just disappeared. Nobody said a word about it. I mean, we had one, one, you know, when are you guys going to stop doing that? Well, why would you? You know, because it's buying, we're just throwing it back in the town.
Right.
So, I mean, it's a good thing for infrastructure.
This is on retail sales only.
Right, right. Well, rooms and meals.
Rooms and meals.
And then, and retail.
Wholesale sales.
If you're not paying tax on it, no. I mean, there's time before March to put something on a, you know, I mean, that would be the time to do a vote on it. But I, I think, you know, it's worth thinking about.
I, I agree.
Will there be any public meetings to get input from before that?
They could do, well, town meeting would be the big one, but yeah. They could do some hearings on it, I guess, or just keep it on the, on the board meetings too.
Be no opposition to it. I mean, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to it, but I'm a great, great advocate for creating new taxes either.
I think that, you know, the only thing with this one is, is it comes back, it, it stays in town. So the one percent that's paid here stays, well, sixty-seven percent of us stays here. So.
Sounds better than sending it to Washington.
Right, right.
I'd be interested to know what the state collects in sales tax in Pittsburgh.
We can find that out. Yeah, go to the Department of Taxation, they'll have the breakdowns on it.
That'd be good to know.
I'd like to know that.
Dave's got something.
Yeah, so I'm clearly not in favor of any new taxes in the town of Pittsburgh. Some issues I have with it, I live in the town of Pittsburgh. However, my address is brand rather than, anything I buy online, I get nailed seven percent. So it's, I don't. It's not right. Uh, I know there's other people. I'm sure most everybody on my road gets nailed that same way. So, you know, if it was legitimately in each town, I guess that's one thing. Uh, I don't know how many people we have who have Pittsburgh addresses who live in another town that this is going to affect.
Well, I mean, you're basing it on zip code, so, you know, that's, that's what, that's what controls it on where the money goes from, you know, your, your internet sales or your online sales.
I understand that, but I don't live in Brandon just because my zip code is that and I don't believe there's any recourse to straighten that out unless I want to get a P.O. box in Pittsburgh and pay for that. So again, I'm not, I'm just saying, the, the system isn't perfect, okay, in case people think it is. And I guess if the entire town thinks this is a good idea, then, or the majority of the town, I guess I could be in favor of it, but if I had to just sit here and say yes, we're going to impose this, uh, I don't think I could do that because I think a lot of us pay enough in taxes already without adding even more to it. So that's just my opinion.
So. If I can just say something with this. If we have to bond money for any of these projects, that is a direct increase in property taxes. If we bond for wastewater, every wastewater user gets to pay that, you know, whatever it costs to do it. Our, you know, our wastewater system is pretty small, so, you know, any amount of money that, that's a big hit to them. Water's the same way, you know, when we do a bond, it doesn't affect, if you're not a water and sewer, you're not paying it. Because it's coming in of your user fees. You know, anytime we're doing paving or anything, I mean, that's an expense that's in, you know, our, our, our general, our budget. That's based, that's how we, the town bases the tax rate every year. So you're paying it no matter what, you know, and this is, this just gives a way for it to come in through another form of sales tax versus property taxes that can be used to fund projects that would actually offset things in your regular, your regular general budget.
Right.
And it does work.
Is there any way of estimating or coming up with a figure as to what would be collected through this? I mean.
Look at your sales tax.
Yeah. I mean, businesses, if you've got in, in town, every store going, every store will be involved to some degree.
We can look at, on the state.
That's what you're saying, right? When you, when you shop online, some online purchases too, Joe.
I know that you can look up like the alcohol, tobacco and rooms and meals. I haven't, I've never looked at it, see if you can find online sales, but can certainly find those, those three. And those are the, those are usually the big ones. I know online's gotten bigger through the years, but, um.
I think you can get a total for sales.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I've never looked it up, so I'm sure it's there.
It'd be a real cold day before I could get behind another tax, so I can tell you that right now.
You don't sell pumpkin, you're going to have to charge that.
Pumpkins are exempt, but the trees aren't, so, but it doesn't really matter.
Is that, is that true?
How does, how does that be?
It's a vegetable, buddy.
It's a vegetable.
That's how it's.
Can't eat the tree.
So if I started eating trees, I could get them tax exempt?
You have to talk to the state.
Oh, okay.
These are state problems, but I'm going to take my position right now that I, I see Dave's point, I understand what they did there.
Yep.
Think this is just going to be taken from the local people. We don't have a big, robust tourism. You know, if we were St. Ellington, I could sit there and say maybe, but.
I don't know. We get a lot of people stopping through on seven.
I would bet the amount that's spot online.
All the time.
From, would mostly come from the people that are doing.
Oh, online, absolutely, because.
And that would be a direct tax on the.
You guys get money every day. It would offset Dave's online sales because I shop here every day.
If, if the voters want to vote for it, that's fine, but I can't get behind this. I'm going to say it right off.
Oh, that's fine. Um, I think that we're, like we said, we have plenty of time before March, so maybe just getting some.
Yeah.
You know, some, you know, some numbers that were asked for and we'll, we'll continue that conversation at another time.
And, you know, and maybe, well, I'm not saying we need to do that, maybe we, to test the waters, you know, will online survey or something on our website?
Yeah.
Just, you know, what is your opinion on this?
What are the last newsletters?
I was just thinking the newsletters, seeing how that goes out quarterly.
Yeah.
The little questionnaire, are you in favor? Explain what it does.
Yeah.
Little boy brought that, so they're, so they're informed about it.
That's a good idea.
I don't have a problem with any of that stuff.
Alright.
If you sit here and say we're going to do it, I can't.
We're all planning it elsewhere.
We're still in the, still in the fact findings portion of this, so, alright, let's move on from that for now. Um, alright, tire quotes for the grader, so.
Yeah, some, one of them's gold.
I know, they're drastically different, why?
So. Tires, but they're all from the.
Yeah, but I mean, like more than.
They're all from the same place, right? There's got to be something else.
Yeah.
In the neighborhood that sells tires. Be more than one quote or one business.
Ray Bean sells tires in Rutland, I'm sure.
Yes, they do, yes, yeah.
Uh, there's a couple more places in Rutland.
I can ask Chad to shop around.
I would agree with Mr. Mills. I think we have to get from at least two more before we make that decision.
No, that's a good idea.
So just so you know, the lowest quote was within my spending limit, but I figured it would be good to bring it to the select.
Okay, good point. Fair point.
Oh, we'd love to talk about tires.
We appreciate that, Dave.
Is online an option?
Problem is getting them mounted.
Yeah, get them shipped. That'd be great. Nobody's going to want two of those if they don't sell them. They got to sell them.
They got to sell, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I've done that with like front tires because I can get them mounted at school, but. Or tractor tires, that kind of stuff is more of a specialty. Uh, yeah. Well, I'm sure you can find them online significantly less than what you could do with.
It's three thousand dollars to ship them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I bought new tires for my pickup and they were cheaper than I could find them anywhere else and it was free shipping.
I buy tires online too.
And they showed up like two days, they were sitting in my yard.
That's cool.
But Mark brings a good point, like shops don't like to put other tires on, so.
No, they don't.
Unless you know a guy and.
Yeah.
You got to know a guy, right?
Yeah.
Nobody knows a guy.
Break tires.
Got to find a guy.
Yeah.
Alright, um, so we'll wait for some more quotes. Alright, citizen, attorney, complaint, complaints, plural, I suppose. Are they the same heading? Yes, it's about the same topic.
We're taking off of it?
No, I'm, I heard it from you, so, well, I don't know.
Tell us, well, tell us what has come in.
You had said that you heard something yesterday, so I didn't know if you wanted to.
Um, well, I, I had heard that an attorney had, had come in and then I heard one had called. So I don't know a lot more than that except for it's an issue with the filings. And we did have a, you copied us on a complaint from someone that wrote in.
Yes.
A week ago or two weeks? It was right after our last meeting.
But.
So I.
Week and a half, probably.
I feel if we're getting a complaint, we have to.
No, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
So that's why I asked it for the. Can you fill us in a little bit on it? Because I.
Um, yeah, I'm just trying to think of how I want to do this without really shaming anybody.
Well, what was the complaint that came in from?
The complaint, we had complaints from some residents and a few attorneys that do title searches, that they weren't getting documents back in a proper time. Our town attorney addressed it with the clerk's office on Monday. We helped make a day, a daybook so that everything that was unrecorded is actually documented on a sheet now. But we did receive, like, I mean, I have a file with, you know, two, two attorneys, one resident who was pretty fired up about it. But they weren't able to get title policies updated and things because documents weren't being timely recorded.
So, um, what is the usual turnaround time? Does anyone know? What, what would you expect the turnaround time to be on a document filed? I, I have no idea what we usually look for.
All caught up?
You used to do the files.
Yeah, I mean, it's different then because more of it's electronic now. Like I know when Gary was here Monday, he did say that most towns are two weeks tops for documents being unrecorded.
How, how long was the complaint? What were they talking about? Was there a length of time they were waiting?
They were months and months behind.
There was stuff not sent back to attorneys from last November.
So many, many, many months behind and.
From November?
Stuff was recorded but not sent back.
The work was half done and that's what it boils down to. Work that shouldn't have been done, it was only half, half completed.
Was, so is, was this, it was more than one instance? There was more than that complaint? I mean, obviously the attorneys must have.
Well, so of course, we got more phone calls because, you know, this clerk was on vacation for ten days. So they were calling around the building and, um, yeah, we, I think we received probably a half dozen complaints in here. I know someone came in today too, looking for something and I don't know what the outcome was of that, but, um, so with our attorney being here, he did suggest that, you know, we could help in-house to try to get caught up, them caught up in the office. And we got the daybook done, so, you know, at least folks can come in and look at sheets to see what's there, but, you know. I know our town.
Okay, so the clerk's office has been closed for what, a month on Friday? So is this number coming down because of that?
It's come down a lot this week.
It has.
It has.
Do, do we have any idea how many documents or how many filings we're behind? Or is it all nine months behind or is it just, are we two months behind or a month? I don't know.
So June, July, it's back to the beginning of May now that's unrecorded and unindexed, which is what the daybook does. It shows the time, the day it came in and who it was from and the parties involved.
Okay, so, the clerk's office has been closed for what, a month on Friday, so is this number coming down because of that?
It's come down a lot this week.
It has?
It has.
Do, do we have any idea how many documents or how many filings we're behind, or is it all nine months behind, or is it just, are we two months behind, or a month? I don't know.
So June, July, it's back to the beginning of May now, that's unrecorded and unindexed, which is what the daybook does. It shows the time, the day it came in, and who it was from, and the parties involved. As far as it being put in the land records, I think it's up to some, something in April now. And, and I know that the assistant clerk has been sending back tons of documents to people, so.
Hmm.
I, I don't know what that timeframe is on that.
Are we going to be able to come concurrent quick, or are we going to have to hire someone else to help? I don't know. It seems to me if it's two-week turnaround is average, we, we're still way behind then.
So, again, it's gotten better this week.
That's.
I mean, since, since our attorney had a conversation, it changed drastically, so.
Isn't that why we close Fridays though, so they can get caught up?
Yes.
Not so.
She hadn't been here, so, it just started, the Friday thing, so. She came in and told us that she.
How long ago did it start?
I think, well, I think Dave's right, there's probably been at least, at least four.
Well, it's July first, July first or whatever. Where's July? So.
And she's been gone two weeks.
July seventh, so one, so four Fridays.
So, is, is there a lot of documents in that? I don't know how many are.
There are, um, I don't know, I handwrote June and July in the day for, to help her out and sixty, seventy maybe, just for the two months.
Yikes.
So, there, there was an email that was sent to me from an attorney that their, their title insurance company had kind of a group email go out saying, well, just let everyone know Pittsburgh's behind. That's a problem, so.
Doesn't look good.
Um, I did tell Helen that this was coming up tonight, and so, after you had called, and then I called you, so, um.
So.
Okay.
So you're, it's, it's improved this week?
Significantly.
Okay, so, again, without knowing how many documents there is, um, I guess, well, I'll ask, do you have a better idea how many documents? And I do, and you know more about this than I do. What is a reasonable timeframe to get this caught up in?
That I can't answer, I don't, I've never done record, I've never recorded, so.
Oh, okay.
Would, would the league of city and towns have any advice or recommendations for a problem like this? Or is that just not the way to go?
No, I think, you know, Gary says he's just going to stay on top of it and see how things go, so.
Okay.
Maybe we should just give it two weeks till the next meeting and see how much is reduced.
Yeah.
Before we do anything.
I think we should talk to her. Never end.
Well, obviously, did Gary, was Gary able to have a conversation?
Yeah, he came in Monday and they sat down in my office, so.
Do you think there should be more time, or do you think that's enough for now?
Well, like you said, give it two weeks and see.
Yeah, that's, seems fair.
I mean, if you get title insurance companies that are.
Yeah, that's, that's not.
Well, that's concerning.
Concerning, yes, I mean, it's, yeah, um, but, I mean, the fact that you're telling me this week improved dramatically, hopefully the next couple of weeks will too, and, you know, if we can, like you said, what, there's seventy, you're guessing seventy or whatever, you know, if that gets cut in half in that amount of time, then I'd say we're going in the right direction, so.
Yeah, I don't know how long it takes to do a full recording of something.
Yeah, I, I have no idea.
So, you said two different things. We were recorded up until April?
I think it's April, I'd have to look at COTS, I don't know, Helen could tell you, she's on the meeting.
So I think we go by date if we need to, right? You know, if there's April filings, and what's the other ones? You said up to May and.
Then, right, the unrecorded's are on the daybook, which I think starts May third to today.
Okay, so.
Is it possible that some things even go way back beyond that, or?
I think the only concern that some of the attorneys had that had called me were that they hadn't received their documents back yet, so.
Though they may be done, just hadn't been sent back.
Okay, from April prior, yeah, I, I, I guess, I'd have to look, Tom.
Yeah. Though they may have already been done, that's what you're saying. They may have been done, just hadn't been.
Before April, everything's got, as it's recorded, it has a book in pages and everything. I don't know if they've been, if the images have been scanned, I mean, that's the thing, you'd have to go to look at COTS, but. I mean, this is a weird thing here, you know, like, we're getting these complaints and, you know, I, I don't, Helen doesn't work for me, and it's, you know, we've. It's a, it's a weird situation that I'm in here, I think, so, um.
Well, I think it's important we stay on this. If we've got an issue with title insurance companies, that's a.
Well, yeah.
That's real. Um, I, I think maybe we should just wait and see what progress is made on, and I think the first one you said, filings were at April, right now, up to April? Or could you check on that?
We'd just have to check on the COTS system to see what it is.
Alright, so maybe let's at least set where we are right now and see if, when we meet again, if we have another drastic reduction and maybe it'll.
I had a parallel call me yesterday at like quarter of five that was telling me, and I, as you can look at COTS online, you know, you subscribe to it and you can see it, so, and it tells the good through dates and all that other stuff, so.
Okay.
So, alright, I'm just trying to figure out a way, you know, to gauge what kind of process, or what kind of progress we're making, so.
That's, Helen's got to answer that for you. I can't answer that question.
That's Helen's.
Maybe we should, maybe we should ask her.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I do think we probably should keep.
One thing that troubles me a bit is this same problem cropped up several years ago, and I don't know if it ever got completely taken care of, or whether it's.
I think it did, Joe, but if you stop and think, we've had a, a huge amount of property being sold too in the last couple of years.
Right, right.
You know, it's, it's been unusual the last couple of years. I mean, you can't buy a house in Pittsburgh. You know, it's been, they've been selling like crazy, they've been getting way over market price and everything.
Yeah.
The sales have gone nuts in this town, so that could be part of it, I don't know.
Could be.
That's why I say we need to talk to her. I mean, we can't sit here and assume something that we don't have a damn clue what we're talking about.
We don't know what's going on.
No, exactly, so, I think we need to get her to.
The only clue we have is what's been called.
Well, exactly, and maybe, is there a reason why? We need to find that out.
Yeah.
You know, you can't go off half-cocked.
Right, no, I, no, I know.
Well, I don't think it's going off half-cocked, Tom.
No, 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 that's, maybe he was wrong word.
Three months versus two weeks when Gary.
But you need to talk to the person, you can't sit here and assume something. We have to talk to her. On how, we know what's going on, we don't know what's going on. I don't know what's going on.
It might be.
Till I find out.
Right, a good excuse if we're overlooking, I can't imagine.
Exactly, maybe there's been some, some programs on the computer, I don't know, but what's going on, but maybe there's a reason.
Well, I think there was a concern before, that's why the Friday was approved.
Because she came in and asked, so I'm behind, we can't get caught up because of the people coming in, I remember sitting, she sits here. That's what I'm saying, we need to talk to her and say, hey, is this enough to get you back up and going?
Does she need to be able to go into a place where absolutely nobody can bother her?
Exactly, so, so I say we need to talk to her.
Do we need to get some temp help, to help her?
Whatever it takes to get it, yeah.
To get it.
Get it caught back up.
Yeah, get back on track.
Well, let's, I think, uh, you know, it's going in the right direction, so I think we have waiting, you know, two weeks.
Talk to her, or how, how are we going to do that, because obviously.
I can, I gotta go to Rutland tomorrow, I can stop in and just, yeah, I'm willing to stop in and.
Okay.
That's fine.
See what's going on, and if she need, you know, see if there's anything she needs.
Yeah.
Let's just revisit it next time.
That sounds good.
Revisit it.
Okay, alright, great. Okay, um, anything on the orders?
Dave, what's this transfer to TD Bank of seven thousand? What is that wire, what is that?
Where are you getting that from, Mark? So is this from, um, can I see that just for sure? So I know that they deposit cash in Bar Harbor, and then it gets transferred to TD Bank as a check. I'm not, I don't know, that would, I'd have to ask. Let me see if I can find that one, what's that on, is that twenty-four? Town of Pittsburgh to, oh, it might be for payroll, actually. That's probably for payroll. All the other payroll things right there.
So what was the one you asked about?
What number?
I asked about thirty ninety-five, Town of Pittsburgh, just a transfer to TD Bank of seven thousand. I just was wondering what it was.
I think it's payroll, because there's a, there's a bunch of batches here for it, so there's.
So what is the E F T P S? I don't ever remember seeing that one before.
What is that?
That's, okay, so payroll transfer.
Fair taxes. That's your.
I don't ever remember seeing it.
It's your electronic tax payment for.
What are you looking at?
For payroll, Dave.
Nine ten.
Nine ten.
So that's, that's.
What is it, Dave?
It's electronic tax payment for payroll, so we have to do that, that's how it gets.
Oh.
It's like your nine forty-one's.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, alright, so they must have just changed the name of it?
Well, you see, the, the invoice number is PR seven twenty and seven twenty-seven, so those are the two weeks that it's covering.
Yeah, so those are all payroll.
So this, well, this one's payroll too?
E F T P S, I don't ever remember seeing that.
Yeah, I know.
They, they weren't on before, and Ann had asked that that stuff get broken out, broken out, because it was an expense, so.
So.
Oh, right, because, yeah, because we, yeah, we never used to see them, like, so now we got the Affleck and Blue Cross Blue Shield, like, it's all broken down now.
Okay.
Yeah.
The thunder towing?
They do, um, repairs on our cruisers.
That's a repair?
Yep.
And Witz's work was on the water truck for.
Ah, they did brakes on that one, I believe.
Water truck for the fire department?
No, the, the water truck for the water department.
Okay.
Yep.
I saw that we re-upped an annual with Zoom for a hundred and fifty dollars.
We're on it right now, it's for this one.
Yeah, I know, but have we looked at some of the other options? Because I zoomed in here the other day and it was awful.
Well, I'm wondering how people get here tonight, because we met, we played around with microphones.
It was awful the other night because we lost a connection in the back.
Yeah.
And we were able to get you back the video by me turning the screen around.
My only question is that because we use Teams now because we don't have to pay for it, and it is a lot better. So I don't know if there's some other options after this year's renewal, that's all I want to point out, that we just don't.
I don't know if it's Zoom, I think it's just the way that the room's set up with the mics, so. That's why we're seeing how it works tonight, and then we can listen to the meeting and see how it sounds and.
Hmm, and Elizabeth Sulia has offered to come in and help us with some tech support, and she had actually, because she was at that meeting when you were via Zoom, and she said honestly, like, a select board member shouldn't be on an open Zoom, there should be a whole separate, like, connection for any one of us that are. And she, she knows how to, like, set that up, I, I guess, so.
Well, I think if we're going to pay for the subscription, we probably should do something like that, because it wasn't. I just brought that up, because we don't even use Zoom anymore, so, in business, we use Teams or something else, so, just.
So, we've used Teams, I've used Teams a lot of stuff with, like, state things, and as long as people follow the rules and, like, shut their mics off and there's no echo and delay, it works great. But I don't know if they do Teams, do they do Teams for a room like this? We can look into it.
I don't know, just, just a question.
They use Teams, regional used Teams, and yes, Dave, as long as everybody shuts their mics off.
Right.
If they don't, you get this ungodly echo.
I know they spent a fortune on that conference room system too, so.
I bet.
I, I talked to Elizabeth at the library a week ago, so.
Yeah.
Let's see, she's pretty tech savvy, so.
I know, she's.
Just want to bring it up with a hundred and fifty, so, that's all I've got.
So what's this G and K Associates bus prop review? For fourteen, almost fifteen thousand dollars, what? It's ten twenty-seven.
Ten twenty-seven? What, what year are you on, Dave?
Uh, I'm on this, the short page. So I think it's ten twenty-seven.
Reappraisal. It's the, it's your, um, personal property tax.
Okay, alright, it's just, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, one last question, how long was that rental for, for the excavator?
Almost a month, I think it was three weeks. They wait, they, um, let us use a roller too, steam roller too, for sidewalks.
Thousand bucks a week?
Yeah. Probably closer to a month.
Any more questions? Alright, if you want to send those down, we can start signing those. Um, and then, in the meantime, we'll also recess, um.
Wouldn't have a lot of work.
So, yeah, yes, and, uh, open up as the Water and Sewer Commission, where we have one abatement request.
I'll do this one.
Everybody have a chance to look at the abatement?
Yeah, those are three, so you have debit, FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four.
So we had a busted pipe and someone's bill ended up being four thousand dollars more than it typically is, and is looking to have that abated.
I would make a motion that we abate it and we charge him, um, the six of twenty-two, four eighty-five, fifty-six. It's, his June bills consistently seems to be a little bit more than his other bill.
Mm-hmm.
Seems how that's.
I'll second that motion.
Charge him the same as what we did.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And I guess the one comment, I guess this is as good a time as it.
Yeah.
Maybe we need, whether we put something in our newsletter or online, if people are going to be leaving their houses for extended periods of time, uh, maybe they shut their water off, especially if it's in the winter.
Yeah.
Or do at least, we need to put something to make people aware of the fact that this can happen, and you're talking four thousand dollars worth of water in, you know, two days, it's, yeah, it's.
So what do you do if someone uses baseboard hot water?
I don't know, don't they still?
Freeze-worn in their house. There, there are devices that you can put in your window that will automatically, if your temperature drops below, I don't know if it's forty-eight, whatever it is, before it freezes, you can have a light in your window, or it can send a signal to your phone.
Two, two barrels.
That your, your heat is out, so.
Well, so that'd be, yeah, as we go into winter, it might be good just to do little PSAs, and to put something on the Facebook page, the website, and then newsletter.
Where it was thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
I think the other one is like eleven thousand dollars.
What was it? Geez.
It was, it was, right, Kelly?
It doesn't take long to run a lot of water.
No, it doesn't.
Main pipe is broke.
But if you fill your cellar with water.
Well, exactly, yes.
Alright, well, we will adjourn as Water and Sewer Commission, open back up as select board meeting, and then, um, if there is any other comments before we adjourn.
Actually, I can't wait to ask some questions.
Oh.
Oh, it's bridges, it probably should have been a public comment.
That's right, go ahead.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess the first is the cement bridge over on a creek on the truck.
Yep.
That deck is in bad shape.
We know.
We know.
We know.
Yeah.
Any plans to get it resurfaced or ground or something?
Well, that's mostly what our bridge fund has been, we've been putting money in our bridge fund specifically for that bridge.
So we're actually.
We're on the list to get that thing.
Yep, I can give you guys the breakdown, I think I did it once before, so.
Are you looking at months or years?
It's, yeah, not, not months, no.
Well, for part of it. So when, when Pike comes to do our paving, they're actually going to mill that west end where the lip is.
Yeah.
And, and smooth that out, they'll mill it back and, you know, get a little, little pitch on it.
Pretty bad, too.
The rest of it, so it's those, it's those rubber pieces between the, the concrete, and we're waiting, so Daniel's Construction are like the bridge experts, and they're so backlogged. But we've, we've talked to him this spring to come up and look at it, because we take the bridge reports that the state does, and that's what we, you know, we're basing it on. Um, structurally, it's very sound.
Yeah, structurally, it's okay.
It just needs, it needs a little maintenance, so, so we're, we're actually waiting for him to get here, but there's really like one guy that, you know, that does, or one company that does all this now, so they're sending their, their estimator up to look at it, and then we'll go from there, so.
Takes a pounding, that bridge.
So that's in progress. The next one is the, uh, there's supposed to be a box cover going in Whipple Hollow at some point, between Ujers Farm and Amia.
Not that we're aware of, I know that we, there was, there's nothing proposed now.
Was it by Hogback, we didn't do that one.
There was the one, yeah, that was the one that was millions of dollars.
Yeah, we didn't do that.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
No, they've been doing some cross culverts up there, like, we were, well, we were going to pave up there next, this year, but I think we're going to pave, that's the south end of Whipple Hollow, hopefully next year if we got class two paving. We'd probably replace some cross culverts there before we pave, but nothing structure related like that.
Which brings me to, uh, my brother has an issue with constantly racing a grade in front of his house, new layers of asphalt. Since he's lived there, it's probably gone up six, eight or more inches, and his house is close to the road.
Hmm.
I was wondering if it's possible to mill the.
What road is it?
Whipple Hollow, if it could be milled or it's.
What's his address?
Oh, I don't know.
You don't send him a Christmas card?
He doesn't need to use the GPS to get to us now, Steve.
This is, but this is on the portion that hasn't been paved recently?
Intersection, Markowski Road.
Oh, okay.
The next, he's the next house up.
Okay.
Yeah. But you said he can get.
We can go look at it and see what it is, I mean, that's pretty common, you know, because a lot of, you know, roads are expensive to pave, and, you know, most folks are worried about it being smooth, so shim and overlay is what happens most of the time, to do a mill. Like, we're doing one on Arch Street actually this year, because we have a short section to do, but, you know, it gets, it gets more costly, so, but that is something to look at if the road's getting too high, I mean, obviously, it's, probably it's starting to fix weird spots too, so. Um, we'll take a look at it.
Okay, my final one is, uh, the reconstruction of Route seven through Pittsburgh, is that completely done engineering-wise?
No.
Okay.
It's close, segment.
The reason I ask is because Branton did a beautiful job on the roads there, but they have the manhole covers, right, the wheel tracks.
Yeah.
We have any input with the state?
Never noticed that.
Designists.
Excellent point.
Probably not, but it's something that can be. Probably not, but it's something that can be asked.
So, I was under the impression, maybe I misunderstood that, um, the manhole covers were gonna end up on the sidewalks.
So if you've got cross, if you've got cross stuff for like sewer and water to get to, there's, I think there's three in Brandon.
I mean, you can run it right down the middle on a, on a double yellow line, it'd be out of the wheel tracks, you'd only be moving a couple of feet if you're completely doing.
Some of those were pre-existing too, they were just very far down, so, um.
It's a, it's a good point.
Yeah, I mean, they get covered a lot, yeah, no, that's a good.
No, I know, that is.
Very good point.
Yeah.
Approach that.
No, yeah, so, the milling, is it water that's going into your brother's house, or is it just getting up onto the road?
Well, it runs right at his foundation.
Right, I know where his house, yeah, cause he's out here in the roads, yeah.
Like, how close is his house, like?
15, 20, no, 15, 15 feet, 600, maybe 20 feet.
Is it like, does it just pitch towards the house?
Yeah.
So there'd be like no room for like a ditch liner?
Oh, no, no.
They have to pitch the road the other way.
Pitch the road the other way and see what happens. I'll, I'll take a look, we'll take a look at it.
I have pictures of my grandfather, my father's growing up there, they came out of that house and they went down three or four steps and banked to the road, so it's. It's growing.
It's a whole lot of pavement.
It did away with that steepness of that hill, so that was necessary, but now it's just creeping off.
I think every curb on this, through this village at one point was seven inch reveal.
Yeah.
Now it's, maybe two.
Some places, no.
No kidding.
So, you know, that's just what the common practice was through the years, like, um.
Man pavement.
But no, those are, those are good points.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Good point.
Yep.
We will check that out though, just to see.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Thank you. See ya, coming in.
All right, if we don't have anything else, I guess we'll adjourn.